Bobby, you and Chris Chair, okay? Harry. Okay? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bellla.
Present.
Mr. Haas.
Here.
Ms. Houck.
Here.
Mr. Morelli.
Here.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Ms. Sedman.
Here.
Mr. Schnee.
Present.
Mr. Urban.
Here.
Mr. Vog.
Here.
Ms. Wakus.
Present.
Mr. McInley.
Present.
Everyone's present.
Everyone's present. Additions or deletions, we'd like to add the specifics as regards to these ASME contract that was voted on earlier this evening. That will become part of number two, the collective bargain agreements update. Any other additions or deletions? Got a motion to approve the agenda with that addition?
Ms. Wakus.
Ms. Sedman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any abstentions, any unheard, motion carry.
Number one, receive and discuss monthly budget reports for July 2019. Mr. Swets is...
Sure.
He had some surgery, I think, or something.
Mr. Swets is dealing with an issue that, but I'll be happy to step in here. Obviously, council, we have the fiscal year to date report for you up until July 31st, 2019. As council is well aware, we are now moving quickly towards budget season. We will be meeting with all of our department heads over the next month in order to come up with a budget, which I will be presenting to county council on October the 15th. Currently, we are in the process of starting the budget preparations and reviewing the audit recommendations from the 2018 audit as well. And if there's any questions regarding this specific month, I'm open for suggestions.
Questions for Mr. Pedri?
Just one thing. It looks like the TAM was paid and we saved about $36,000.
Correct.
What was budgeted.
Correct.
Well, that's good news. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Mr. Parsnick?
Mr. Parsnick, I will also step in for him.
Okay.
I'm beginning to think this wasn't the best idea I had. So, starting with, starting with the APSME court-appointed contract ratification that was just voted on by council tonight on August 27th, 2019. The length of the contract is from January 1st of 2019 through December 31st of 2022. And I will go through the articles as change or no change from the previous contracts, which council approved, which actually expired in December 31st of 2018. Preamble, no changes. Article 1, recognition, no changes. Articles 2 and 3 for union security and for dues deductions are word changes only. Article 4, information, is no change. Article 5, hours of work, is no change. Article 6, holidays, there is a change. Added half a day of a holiday on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve for APSME court-appointed employees. Also, on Article 7, vacations, there was a change. Time will begin on an accrual basis, beginning on January 1st, 2021, as opposed to a lump sum basis that they currently have. That will change, as I said, January 1st, 2021. There are no changes on Articles 8, sick leave, bereavement time, jury duty, military leave, FMLA, call time, overtime, personal leave, leave of absence discrimination. That is Articles 8 through 17. Article 18, union business, was a word change only. We are back to no change on Article 19, travel expenses. There is a change for health and welfare, Article 20, effective January 1st, 2020. All employees hired before January 1st, 2016 will pay a 12% employee contribution. And Americans, ACA language was also added. Article 21, salary and wages, this was also a change. Employees classified as clerk fives receive the following base salary increases: 2019, 0%, 2020, 0%, 2021, 0%, and 2022 was 2.25 for the clerk five positions. All other employees in the union are, shall receive the following base increases: 2019, 3%, 2020, 2.5%, 2021, 2%, 2022, 2.25%. Article 22, grievance and arbitrations, no changes. Life insurance, seniority, no changes. Article 25 is a clothing allowance. Employees will receive $100 annually for a clothing allowance. Article 26, pension plan, 27, classification, 28, peace and stability, and 29, management rights, each on no change. Article 30 was the dates of the contract. Thanks, Chair. January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2022. And then the appendix regarding sick banks, there's no change there. And Appendix B, job classification titles, was a change to add a clerk five title, which was, began in 2019. That's the changes for the APSME court-appointed ratification contract. I can also give an update as to other contracts that we have.
Please.
County also has other contracts that are either at expiration date or are moving forward to expiration date. The first is with the Teamsters, who represents the assistant district attorneys, assistant public defenders, and the public defender social workers. This matter is scheduled for arbitration in October of 2019. Unfortunately, an agreement was not able to be reached. There is a, there's the three contracts for the MOU group supervisors. This is the children and youth, aging, and MHDS. These are the human services, Teamsters, MOUs. And these contracts, we'll discuss, will begin with the Teamsters in October. Those contracts expire on December 31st, 2019. The other contract that is in expiration at this point is the Luna contract. This is for our correctional officers. Talks are ongoing, and the last session was actually today.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Pedri?
Yes, there's one. We have additional contracts that are underway, and I just want to make sure that you continue to work toward the 40-hour work week that was called for when this charter was started. I think it's important that everyone works a 40-hour work week in this county. The adage that, well, they're going to ask for more money. This contract does provide more money. It provides 10% to 12% increase. And I think what you read also is you gave two additional holidays, half-days off to the employees. That's more time off. I mean, so let's comply with that one part of the contract that all county, or to the charter that all county employees would be working a 40-hour work week, and we've worked toward those standards.
Anyone else? Thank you. I'm 1-1, Mr. Rosenkrantz. Mr. O'Neil, I think you're going to have to dim the lights a little bit. Please.
As council is aware, we are, we have been working on the 911 project for a couple of years now. Mr. Rosenkrantz, his team, our consultant, Mr. McGrady here, have done an incredible amount of work, working through the proposals, reviewing the need for these, these policies. I anticipate coming to county council next month with some ideas for funding purposes regarding this project. I've asked Mr. O'Neil, excuse me, Mr. Rosenkrantz, to review the project with you, with you now. Good evening, members of council. Thank you for taking the time to have us here. It's very important. I do not take this project lightly. It's been a long road to get here tonight. We promised you that we'd have an RFP released in April, and vendor responses were received in July. We've been going over the proposals received, and while we're not going to get into the specifics of any contract negotiations with any specific vendor, we're going to give you a broad overview of where we came from, how we got to today, and where we are looking monetary-wise over the next couple of years for borrowing, and the maintenance lifecycle, some budgetary figures for you to review. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce Michael McGrady. Mike McGrady is the president of MCM Consulting Group. He will be presenting the slides this evening. And although I gave him 15 minutes, I know everybody's very busy, and we have a packed work session agenda, so if he could do it in five minutes, that'd be appreciated. So, without further ado, Mr. Mike McGrady.
Thank you very much. Can everyone hear me?
Yes. Okay, great.
All right. So, we initially started back in 2016 with a needs assessment and strategic plan. And as part of that, we assessed the county's current communication system and infrastructure. We looked at their current capabilities. What can the system do? But more importantly, what can the system not do? We looked at the current interoperability capabilities. Who could talk to who? Can police talk to fire? Can fire talk to EMS? Can you talk to PennDOT? Can you talk to Pennsylvania State Police? Because we know they patrol a large area of your county. And then a big thing we did was we interviewed the surveys, I'm sorry, we interviewed and surveyed the users of the system. That's 911, emergency medical services, the county EMA, fire, law enforcement, governmental, and sheriff. Because they are, you know, truly the customers of the system. And then we developed a tactical plan for the future communication system and infrastructure for the county. The goal of the project, of course, is to provide an interoperable system among the users and non-users of the system, to migrate the county systems to a common platform so that everybody can talk to everybody. And then to provide a strategic plan for growth of the communication system, because we realized this system's going to last 20 years. And county council is only going to allocate money for that, so we have to ensure that's going to last the full 20 years of the system. And provide the most technologically advanced system, but at the best price for Luzerne So, when we did our needs assessment strategic plan, we found out a number of things. Number one, Luzerne County really doesn't have a county-wide radio system. You have a quilt work of radio systems that have been cobbled together over the years. As communities joined the 911 center, you brought their radio system on, good, bad, or indifferent. And that has caused some problems over the years. Your current radio transmitters, that's the actual, you know, when you actually push the button at the 911 center, it talks out to the units, and when the units talk back, it turns into a receiver. They're actually end-of-life of 2020. They're no longer manufactured, and they're no longer supported after 2020. Your microwave system is obsolete, and a lot of it's unlicensed. When you have unlicensed microwave, that can cause interference. And, you know, that, of course, can cause problems with your radio signal. And really, there was no standard currently in place for field users' pagers, portables, mobiles, or control station radio equipment. So, someone could be on your system, but their radio wasn't public safety grade. You know, some, you know, fire departments have really good radios, others, you know, do not. And preventive maintenance for field user equipment is lacking. And I would like to tell you, this is a surprise, but, you know, we do these every single day of the week, and, you know, in the older systems, these are typically what you find on a system that's 20 years old. So, when we looked at the key findings, you know, we decided that a, with the county and the users, a new P25 Phase II digital radio system was recommended for the long-term future requirements for your county users. There's an underlying desire and need for interoperability among the users, bordering counties, and Commonwealth agencies. I think, you know, on a large accident, you know, on the highway, you're talking to PennDOT and the Pennsylvania State Police, let alone your fire, police, and emergency medical services. And radio coverage was inconsistent for many areas, and some areas, it was nonexistent. You know, you get into certain state park areas and other places, you know, I call them haulers, you know, you get down in there, and there was no radio signal whatsoever. It didn't matter if you had a mobile radio or a portable radio, unless you walked to the top of the hill, you were not talking back to dispatch, and dispatch wasn't hearing Co-channel interference issues are a major concern to many agencies on your police zones. So, what happens is, certain times of the year, you'll actually get interference from Midland County, there's a place over in Ohio, so you would literally get skip off the atmosphere, and it was actually coming into your system and causing interference. Users of the system, of course, desired improved portable and mobile radio coverage. Portable in-building coverage was a perceived issue, so they would literally go into a building, and they would lose coverage with dispatch. Well, you know, that's not a good, when you're, you know, when you're a fireman fighting a fire inside a building, you can't get back to dispatch if something happens. And numerous public safety agencies use their own operations channels. So, they had their own radio system, but was not monitored by the 911 center. Well, that can cause problems if they get in trouble, and dispatch, you know, doesn't monitor that 911 channel. So, that's what we found. So, of course, our job is to work with the county and the users to come up with a strategic plan and say, this is what your system should do. So, a strategic plan was developed based on the results of the needs assessment, the site surveys, equipment inventories, user surveys and interviews, propagation studies. So, we did, you know, all the studies to show what your coverage is today and what your coverage should be. And, you know, our expertise, you know, I have engineers that have been doing this for 45 years. So, you know, we have a lot of, you know, background on what we're doing here. System designs and budgetary pricing for needed upgrades was included in strategic plan. That's where the famous $20 million figure that's been floating around for the last three years, you know, came from. And we developed a project plan. So, plan number one is, we had to make your system last for the next three years. So, back in 16, we had to make improvements. So, that was phase one, to keep your system alive from 2016 through 2019. And then phase two is what we're going to talk about next. So, what did we do in phase one? Well, we improved grounding in all 11 of your current tower sites. Some of it was substandard. Well, if you get hit by lightning, and you don't have a good grounding system, your $25,000 repeater gets blown up, and then you have to replace that. So, that's one thing that we did. We did tower remediation at 12 sites, you know, everything from cleaning the sites up to new fencing, security system, whatever needed done at those sites, it was done at those sites. Motion lights were installed at the sites. You say, why does that make a difference? Well, people like to steal copper. And when you, you know, that light turns on, you know, obviously, you can see on the camera, you know, who's there. Site monitoring systems were, are being installed currently at all your sites, so that you know when your generator is running, but more importantly, you know when a door opens, or if someone accesses your compound. And then two 180-foot tower sites were built. Whitehaven replaced a 60-foot tower, and that's a capital investment, you know, that county council approved, and that's an investment that lasts 50 years. So, we're very happy with that site. And then Hazelton Water Authority, that's another site that we built, you know, for coverage, but also so that you didn't have to pay lease, you know, at another site. So, both those sites are done, and again, both of those will last for 50 years if you maintain them. And then Shikshini and Red Rock sites were developed. That's areas where you didn't have radio coverage. So, Shikshini and Red Rock are state-owned sites, and the county has an agreement with them that they can use your sites, but more importantly, you can use their sites for free. And that's the shelter, that's the power, that's the tower, that's everything. So, that was a very, very good investment there. So, just a picture.
I'm sorry. Question for you, if that's appropriate. So, the short term, you said you propped up the existing system in phase one. So, are these towers, will they be obsolete with the new system? Will they help out? Or was that just like a stopgap until we get to...
Those new towers will actually be used in the new system. They'll be very beneficial.
They're critical for the next...
Yes.
Okay.
Especially the two state sites, as well as the Whitehaven and Hazelton Water Authority, they're going to make a big difference in your coverage. If you look behind you, there's a picture of the Whitehaven Tower that was built, you know, using county funds.
Great question.
Yes, sir.
You went through, and you said you did these short-term fixes from 2016 to 2019. How long have you been working for the county?
Well, we actually, we just bid them out. We actually don't do the work. We're the consultant. We've probably been working for the county since...
2007?
2007. We did all your funds management, as well as other studies for you throughout the years.
Okay.
Now, phase two is started. And phase two includes the acquisition implementation, the IP-based VHF P25 Phase II trunked radio system. But at the same time, you have to replace your microwave. So, it's a two-pronged thing though. You have to replace the, you have to get the bids for the radio system. Once you know what the radio system, what site's going to be at, and then you do a competitive bid for the microwave part of it. And the microwave's the connectivity that carries the radio signal back, you know, from the tower sites to the 911, and from the 911 center out to the tower sites. So, our recommendations, of course, was create a common platform by operating, by locating all agencies into the single band of VHF. And of course, the nice thing is, we don't have to change your paging system. You know, right now, you have an analog wideband paging system, and we're going to continue to use that frequency, and they'll be able to use their existing pagers. By not replacing your pagers, we saved well over $1 million. So, that's one thing that we did there. You know, and you ask, like, what does phase two mean? Well, phase two means it allows two conversations on the same frequency. Right now, you have one frequency, a transmit and a receive. That's all it does. On phase two, it actually splits that frequency where you can have two talk paths on that. So, it gives you more capability to use channels for radio transmissions. And simulcast, what simulcast does, every single site lights up at the same time. So, when you hit that transmit button back at the 911 center, if you have 15 sites, all 15 sites light up, and they put that RF into the field, and that gives you much better coverage. So, that's why you want to do that. And what trunking does, is trunking makes it more efficient. So, instead of talking on a single channel, you might be talking on channel one, but as soon as you let off, if you talk again, you might go to channel four, you might go to channel five, might go to channel seven. And that way, it allows you to use the frequencies more efficiently. And that's why you do a simulcast trunked system. And then we also designed it that we wanted to have 95% portable coverage over the entire county within urban and suburban structures. So, trying to cover the buildings downtown, you know, in Hazelton and Wilkes-Barre, but also, you need to cover the rural areas. And so, and we did what's called delivery audio quality of 3.4. So, you talk on the radio, and it's without repetition, but I don't have to repeat back to dispatch, you know, did you hear me? And so, we were very successful in our bids to achieve that, that we'll actually have in-building coverage for your users. Because today, right now, they really don't have that. And so, what have we done so far? Well, we've done a lot of work. So, we have done the SEC licensing review, we've done all the tower site surveys, and we went out to every single tower site to see what can be taken off, you know, what can stay on. We have done the propagation studies and the microwave path profiles. So, when vendors give their bids, we can compare what they did to what we have, and then we can run their studies using our software to make sure what they gave us is actually correct. Microwave path profiles make sure, because microwave's line of sight, so I have to be able to see the other tower without, you know, a hillside, or a building, or something being in the way. So, we did all those studies. And those studies literally take months, because you just do iteration after iteration after iteration to make sure they're, they're working. Another big thing we did was we did a subscriber radio and installation inventory. So, we went on inventory, every single user in the whole system, literally thousands of radios, hundreds of fire trucks, you know, hundreds of, you know, ambulances and police cars, to see, you know, what they actually had there, so that we had a true number of what, you know, we were going to ask county council, you know, for the bid, how many radios do we actually need? So, that was something that literally took about four months to do. And then, of course, we looked at the county requirements for the radio system. What does a radio system really need to do? And then we developed the technical specifications, requirements for the new radio system. We developed the request for proposal documents for the radio system, and then we advertised that on April 1st. And so, on April 1st, we put the bid out, and it's open for four months, you know, three and a half months, because you want to, you know, have them visit all the sites, and then you literally have to answer all the questions, because they're going to have questions based on your specifications. And that's what we've done, is answer all the questions over these past months. And then you have a quiet period, where you quit, you know, the questions stop, and you allow the vendor to design the system. Any questions so far on any of that? I know I talk fast, so, sorry. All right. So, we received two proposals on January 15th, 2019, Motorola and EF Johnson.
July 15th.
I'm sorry, July 15th, 2019. So, we, you know, have reviewed those proposals, and this is what we've come up with so far. Motorola's proposal met the specified coverage requirements. So, they met everything we asked for on the coverage. Motorola's system is $3,455,000 less than the EF Johnson proposal. And Motorola's maintenance over 20 years is approximately $5 million less than the EF Johnson proposal. And Motorola's offering a $2 million discount, you know, if you sign a contract before December 31st, 2019, because that's, of course, the end of their fiscal year. And so, the question is, you know, how much is this going to cost the county? Well, when you look up top here, and we, and so, the infrastructure and subscribers, it's about $15,332,962.90. That's to pay for all, I think, the tower sites and every single portable and mobile based on a formula. If you have a fire truck, you get a dual-head mobile, that's a mobile in the front and one on the, on the side, and you get four portable radios. If you have a police car, you get a mobile radio, and you get two portable radios. You have an ambulance, you get a dual-head mobile and, you know, two portable radios. So, we wanted to make sure that there were enough in every fire truck, ambulance, police car, but not pay for, you know, because, you know, some departments, by contract, they buy every single fireman a radio. Well, that gets pretty expensive, so we'll give them what they need to get out the door and do their job, but if they want to buy additional radios, you know, at the discounted price, they can certainly do that. And then, we're going to build a tower up at Harris Pond, that's on the Fish Commission property, and that's going to improve, vastly improve coverage in that area. And that's about $400,000. The good news is, the county received the grant for $330,000. And Fred, that was from the gambling money, correct?
Yes.
Yep, from the gambling money. So, that's a great investment. You know, somebody costs $70,000, and you'll have a brand-new tower that'll last you all those years. Then civil remediations, $400,000. That's an estimate we have, because no matter how good the sites look, the fact of matter is, once you do a structural analysis on it, they might say, hey, you have to strengthen this tower, because, you know, we're putting extra microwave on it, or we're, you know, or the tower's already loaded up, and you're going to put additional antennas on it. So, we have $400,000 set aside for remediation. If we don't spend it, that's fine, but we want to have that in the budget. And we've done this for many years, and it's always good to have that money in there. Then we looked at microwave. Microwave's estimated at $2,275,000. And of course, we'll go out for a competitive bid, and our job is to bring that in under that $2,275,000. But based on all the microwave system we do, we do them every year, that's a, that's a good price. And again, you know, and if you pick when you bid it to, you can, you know, like, you know, if county council moves forward with this, and we can bid this by the end of the year, we should be able to get a discount on that also. And then connectivity to the arena and casino. The arena casino needs special coverage, because you can imagine the size of the structure, how they're built, but we also have to make sure we have connectivity, either fiber or microwave, or some type of connectivity to those sites, so that we can cover them if you have a fire or a police or an EMS incident inside there. We have, we have an additional paging and coverage sites of $1 million. As we're still finalizing this, we wanted to make sure that we had money in there just in case we decide to, you know, maybe increase coverage in this way, or we want to add additional paging site, whatever it might be. Again, if we don't need it, it doesn't get spent, but until we finalize that number, we have to, you know, have it in the budget. Consulting, that's to pay engineers and consultants, that's $507,000. And then, as always, you need a contingency, which is 5% of the total. You know, and again, if that doesn't get spent, then the money, of course, you know, comes back to the county, but you want to have a contingency, because you never know, you know, what happens, you know, when you're out there, you know, building a system like this. County council already has set aside a million dollars, you know, towards this project. We have other capital 911 projects, so this is, you replace all the servers at the 911 center, that's $500,000. New alarm panel at the 911 center is $21,000. And then UPS replacement. And UPS is the uninterruptible power supply. So, before the generator takes on, kicks on, when you have power outage, something has to take that load. Can you imagine the load of a 911 center? So, this is a big machine that has a lot of batteries in it, and it takes the load before the generator kicks on. But more importantly, when you get bad power from a utility, you have a lightning strike, or you get some type of spike in the system, it actually absorbs that spike, and it doesn't ruin the millions of dollars of new radio equipment and 911 equipment that you have in your center.
Current one is 25 years old.
Yeah. And that's end-of-life, too. So, the total borrowing would be $20,700,000, would be the total borrowing that we have.
Again, that's a budgetary projection. That's not finalized, there's been no contract. We're still not even into the contract negotiation phase with any of the vendors that proposed.
And...
Yes, sir.
The microwave was only 200, and the radios, the microwave radios were 275...
Two million, two million, 275, yeah.
Fifteen million up there is primarily for radios for...
It's, it's for the whole, for all, all, all the tower sites, as well as for the field users.
Right, how much is field users, how much is towers?
I would say, when, when, when all said and done, the capital for the infrastructure will be 60% of the project, and the 40% for the subscribers, when you add in, you know, all the total numbers. So, it's about a 60-40s, but, which is, which is not uncommon, you know, so. So, and then, what's the cost to run the system? Well, you want to do a 20-year maintenance plan, because I can't come to you and say, "Spend $20 million and not have the system last 20 years," and that's these systems are made to do. So, it's a total of $7,354,000, so a little bit over about $350,000, maybe $355,000 a year, you know, for 20 years, but that includes two refreshes of the system. So, let's say at year nine, and at year, year seven, and year 14, they come in and actually replace out all the hardware, you know, in the system, so that it, it was to last those 20 years. So, you're paying for 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, for, if something happens, you know, they know before you know it, they're actually monitoring the system, and they call you at the center and say, "Did you know the site was done?" Okay, and they tell you the site was done, and they, they try to remotely fix it, they can't remotely fix it, well, then they send somebody out and they fix what needs to be fixed. And that includes, you know, and then, of course, there's spares in the system, we have spares that, you know, if a repeater goes bad, they take the repeater out, put a new one in, ship it back, you know, and you, you get express, it literally, when you're shipping that one back, a new one from the factory, a new spare's already on the way, so within 48 hours, you have a spare, and that's what you try to do in a system like that. So, that is the cost over, over the, the term of the, the contract. Any questions on the money part?
Yeah, can I ask you a question on the money part? I mean, when you're looking at the big picture here of the dollars that you have here on the total borrowing amount, it's kind of like throwing a deck chair off the Titanic, but just on the connectivity issue, where you have here $260,000 arena and casino, like, is that traditionally, in your experience, a place like the casino, like, if they need to do something to ensure that they're connecting better? Like, I'll give you an example, I, I'm employed at a school district, I know we put repeaters and things in among buildings to ensure that when our security staff, with all the, in security enhancements that we've done, to make sure that our security and our, our SROs, that they could communicate better throughout the buildings with that repeater around. That was like our cost, we did that, because we wanted to make sure we could talk better. So, when you're talking about, you know, $260,000 price tag, is that something that traditionally is, is, you know, does the casino have...
So, there's two ways to look at it, so what we decided is, there are certain high-profile, high-incident buildings, such as a courthouse, the casino, and others, that need to be part of your public safety radio system, so that was part of the bid specifications.
The school.
Well, actually, what, actually, at each school, well, each school actually is going to, as part of this project, is going to get a, a control station, you know, that you'll be able to have a control station at the office, so if an emergency happens, you can push that button, and you're talking directly to 911 on the radio system. So, that's, you know, so that's part of what we did, is part of it, because you can't have 90 school buildings, and, you know, today's society, and I can't come to this council and say, "Oh, by the way, we did this great system, but we didn't take care of the schools." So, getting back to your, to your point, so, we are actually putting in, you know, almost like mini-radio systems in those buildings, so that we can cover those buildings, and that connectivity is really microwave, but sometimes, you know, since you're on the roof of a building, it has to do a little bit different, so that's why we broke it out separately. You know, that's the only reason we broke it out separately. Yes, sir?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
First of all, thanks for the presentation, very good, to the point, and I apologize if some of my questions might have discussed in the past, but just in, in general, you answered my first question with regards to the life of the system, which is about 20 years.
Yes, sir.
Paying off and maintenance. The other question I have is with regards to other counties, where are we at with, and what are other counties doing with 911s, I'm just curious as to...
So, counties of your size, so we're just finishing a project for Erie County, and Erie County is about $26 million, $26.5 million project, we came in about, about $24 million for that, but they were in the same boat you are, where they had a 20-year-old system, no one could talk to each other, police couldn't talk to fire, fire couldn't talk to EMS, so that system got replaced. Bucks County replaced their system the last few years, Burke County replaced their system the last few years, Dolphin County, so you are in the same boat that everybody else is, these systems are all 20 years old, and it's, and they're reaching end of life. So, I would say, over the last, you know, five years, there's probably been at least 15 counties in Pennsylvania who have done the same thing that you're doing. You're just a little bit further behind, and then, that's why we're trying to, you know, to, to meet with you and, you know, give you the, the options and move forward.
Okay, and then, one other question, I assume, based off of what I read here, so we haven't discussed on council borrowing, I mean, obviously, we haven't made a decision, but any options out there have been discussed, so that's something else to look at.
I think that's...
The cost would be, this is, these are all estimates.
Yeah.
All budgetary estimates, that's what we were tasked with, to give you an idea of what to discuss on potential future borrowing.
And then, once we finalize negotiations, then we would come back to you and say, "Here's the final number."
Okay.
Thank you. Yes.
We've got two bids in. Is that normal, that you get that fewer bids?
There's only three companies that can do it.
Only three companies.
It's Harris, EF Johnson, and Motorola, those are the only three that could really do this system, and Harris just chose not to bid on it. They, they did come to the site blocks, they were part of the process, but they just chose not to bid on it.
And do you have recommendations as to the ones that you have, you know, used in the other counties and seeing that it's...
So, this, with this is really, you know, we're looking at the one, the number one that meets the requirements of the bid, and the second, of course, is, is price. So, you know, so, you know, at this time, we're not going to give you a recommendation, but we are going to, to move forward, you know, with negotiations with a vendor, and then come back to you with the, with the final price for everything.
Is it, is it typical that, that the counties buy all the radios for every municipality and the, and do those municipalities number two, do they, do they reimburse the county for those radios?
So, that, that's a very good question. So, the majority, the majority of bids, when you're replacing out, and we're doing a forklift replace out, we're replacing the whole system out, typically, they was rolled into the, the price, because, you know, you can try to get the money from 70 municipalities and have them raise taxes, or, you know, the county as one entity can do it, you know, a, you know, a little bit easier. Erie County paid for the radios in the same formula that we did, you know, Bucks County, Burke County, they all paid for the radios for this, again, we're not paying for 100%, we're paying for majority, but they are going to have their own expenses, if, you know, if they want a fire, or a radio for every fireman, if they want a radio for every policeman, they are going to have to pay that additional cost to municipalities as well. Now, they can get the discounted price, which is good, but, you know, still, they're going to have to do that. Yes?
Okay, questions over here?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I had a question about the system maintenance costs over the 20 years, are, that's not included in your, your estimate of cost?
No, it's not.
So, we would have to budget that, and is that something that's reimbursable?
It is, but with our funding, as you know, it's pretty much capped with our costs, we, we've done all we can to, to squeeze out the last bit of funding we can with the new act, with the, with the increase in revenue. Currently, we're covering approximately $130,000 to $150,000 a year for maintenance and support costs on this system, but with a larger system, a digital system, you have much higher maintenance and support costs with that. So, moving forward, unless we make cuts in other areas, or unless PIMA, the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, starts funding us near 100%, where we're not dependent on the general fund, or they start covering costs such as our trunking fees and, and things like that, with the next-generation system, they put out a bid, or an RFP...
Right.
To provide the call routing, so that may cut, you know, $100,000 off of our annual operating budget, where we could put towards this as well, but this, this would be required in year two and beyond.
And is this, is this the total amount, or is this the amount that we would need to allocate from the general fund for?
At this point, I, I can't say that, we'd have to work through the budget at that point, you know, two years out. Again, this is all budgetary estimates, that's not a hard figure.
Right.
So, this is, just to give you an idea of what we're looking at in the future, and what we're looking at borrowing, and what we're looking at potentially to, the 20-year cost of total ownership is what we have to look at.
And the one thing we did do is, we did look at, that, there was two refreshes in there, so you're paying also for the maintenance, but also, they're going to refresh the system, say, at year seven and year 14, too.
But that's part of...
Yes, that's part of that, yes. We, we, again, I can't come to you and say, "Spend all this money and not make it last 20 years."
And this does not include end-user, the portable and mobile equipment that's going to be in the police, fire, and EMS vehicles, or in the county vehicles, there's a maintenance cost for those as well, that the agencies, by right, I think, should be responsible for, if we're going to fund the equipment upfront, so that, that's another cost that's not factored into that.
Mr. Haas, have a question.
Just one more thing, on the, the page before that, the consulting fees, are your fees in that, or are your fees in addition to this?
Well, no, that's an estimated, you know, cost, you know...
Does that include your fees, though?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, so there's no additional cost beyond that.
We have not done a contract yet for that part of it.
Yeah, we're still finishing our original contract.
Currently, MCM's contract is up until contract negotiation and final contract award to the successful bidder or proposer of this system, that's where that contract takes us to, that you funded through the capital projects.
Right, but I wanted to know if the fees involved with this port, like the whole planning and...
Yeah, we're, we're being paid right now, yeah.
Not in that 500,000, no, if that's what you're asking.
It's not in 500.
That's new additional fees potentially, that's a budgetary estimate, so that would...
Right, that was my question.
Yeah, that'll be the next part of the contract.
Okay.
Implementing the system, right.
We're going to have to release an RFP for that part of it, or do an addendum to the contract.
So, your fees, your current, your current fees are not in this?
Nope, no, that was already allocated, and we're currently being paid for that right now.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're waiting patiently.
Sorry.
Thanks, that's good. Three brief questions, gentlemen, one, Mr. McGrady, about the refreshing years, year seven, year 14. So, they, the, the hardware is refreshed regardless of the condition, they're going to come in and they're going to replace the aged equipment?
Correct.
Is that right, or is it going to say, "Well, this could still last, so we're going to leave this alone"?
No.
How would that pan out?
Typically, they come in and they replace everything at one time, because the worst thing you can do is not replace one part, and at the same time, they'll upgrade the software, so, and a lot of this time, what it really is, is these systems reach the age where you can't upgrade the software on them anymore, and that's why they come in and replace all the hardware, you know, and then they, they upgrade the software on it, and then again, at year 14, they also do it, too. And it's, and it makes it easier to maintain, but, yeah, it's, it's, it's not that they can just pick and choose what they do, you know, that's all part of the contract, is, you know, exactly what they're going to do is part of the refresh, and that's part of contract negotiations.
Good, and it's going to be negotiated, okay, very good, thanks for that. And Mr. Rosecrans, it's a funny question, though, we got a, a brief about the next-gen 911 coming from the Department of Commerce, so did you, did I hear you correctly, is some of that can offset some of these costs you're looking, I know it's going to be later down the road, but...
That next-gen 911 funding, I believe, is for the call routing, call delivery, and that's given directly to the state as a grant, not to individual counties. So, if, for, for instance, if the state decides to go with the selective vendor, and they go with the, the call routing and delivery system as, as proposed, that may shave off, you know, currently, we're paying about $13,000 to $14,000 a month to the telephone companies for call routing and call delivery and database management, so if the state were to take that over, that's approximately, you know, a budgetary estimate of what we may be able to use towards other expenses if the state takes over those expenses. The 911 phone system that we share with the Five County region, that took off our budget probably about $140,000 this year, that we were able to use towards other expenses and to absorb a lot of the costs where the general fund did not have to. So, that's where you see where we cut down on our utility expenses, we took that over, and the county general fund saved approximately $60,000 to $80,000. So, that, that's what I'm saying, we could offset expenses as the state takes on expenses for us countywide, or, or they increase the funding, which, knock on wood, that's done in the next several years, so I, I don't know, you know, if that's going to happen, but there's been talks on that. But that's, that's where we'll see the lion's share of the savings, is the call routing, the next-gen grant system that will upgrade the state system to offset some of our expenses.
Yeah, that's what it says here, it's dealing with the upgrade, $4.88 million statewide, so, so we just have to apply for that. Okay, that's helpful, thank you for that, and last, Mr. McGrady, back to you, you talked about, you took four months and you, you took inventory of every user in the system. Did you find the, the folks on the ground, were they, were they frustrated with where we're at currently, were they happy to see you and say, "Look, we're excited to have this, this upgrade"?
They were very happy to see us, because this has been talked about for, for many years, so when we did go out there, they were very pleased, of course, they had a lot of questions that we couldn't initially answer at that time, and we explained to them what we wanted to do, how we wanted to do it, you know, we don't make any promises as to if county council is going to pay for radios or not, because that's not, you know, that's not our decision, but we did explain to them why we're collecting the inventory, and, you know, in some situations, you know, we gave them recommendations, saying, "You might want to replace that radio sooner rather than later, just because, you know, it's a, is an out-of-date radio, or it wasn't working properly," but overall, they're very supportive, and, you know, and Fred's done a good job of, you know, keeping newsletters out there, as well as we go out and, you know, do, you know, regional meetings with them, saying, you know, and that's what we're going to do after we meet with county council, is do regional meetings with all the users, say, "Hey, here's where we're at, and here's the next step."
And you found that was pretty consistent with volunteer and, and professional...
Yes, yes.
Systems, okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Sigmund.
Yes, and I think Pat was trying to get to this question before, but I didn't hear an answer on it. The small item, when you look at the whole cost of this, regarding the casino and the arena, okay, why are, why is the casino not paying themselves for this? I mean, they're private, I mean, I can understand the arena, that's, that's owned by, because the casino, I mean, they certainly can afford it.
So, the reason that that's included in your budget is that's really the county owns the equipment inside that building that we're going to put in there, as well as, we want to make sure that we pay for the connectivity, and we get the connectivity that we will know will work on your system, because you'll be literally able to walk from the street, walk in that building, and be on the system inside the building, when you walk it back out, it comes right back on, and we want to make sure that that's the same equipment that we have for the winning bidder, as well as the same microwave as the winning bidder, because you don't want to have something different, and then all of a sudden, they say it doesn't work, and we just spent a half million dollars.
And that's Plains Township that responds there, so you have police, fire, and EMS that respond there, it's not truly private, so, so we still have an obligation and duty to provide communications and coverage there with such a large facility, again, likewise with the arena, you know, that, that's a private entity, but there's still sheriff's coverage in there that needs communication, police, fire, and EMS, if there's ever a large-scale event, we need coverage there to be able to communicate effectively.
Mr. McGrady.
Yes, sir.
One more question, you were talking about the schools, can you talk a little bit more about that, you can put what in every school?
So, so right now, that you want to have communications in the schools, so what you could do is, you can, you know, work with each school district and decide, you know, where they want to put it, if they want to put it in the nurse's office, the, the principal's office, it will be a, more or less a mobile radio and a power supply, but there's an antenna on the roof, so it has a really good signal, so if they would have an emergency, you know, in that building, you can push a button on the, the radio that lets dispatch know there's an emergency and opens up a channel, as well as they could talk directly to the 911 center and let the 911 center know that there's an active shooter, there's a fire, or something like that, so it will give the 911 center, as well as police, fire, and EMS, direct communications with every school building in the, in the county.
Every school building?
Yeah, I think there's 90, correct, Fred?
We propose 90, I believe, so one vendor proposed 95 base stations. One of the key findings through any, any massive school shooting, God forbid, you know, whatever happens in our county, is, is communications, direct communications, second save lives, and that's what our intent was with this initiative, was to fund a base station, direct communication access, all they have to do is push a button, and they have instant communications with us.
So, you're, you're talking, you're, you're in a school, a school district that has a, a school resource officer housed in each, each building of the, of the district, now instead of wondering what's happening, what's going on with the system, you're proposing that, that SRO is in direct communication with those responders before they're even on property, and they know the possibility of what corner of the building we're talking about, where, because it's direct, it's more of a direct line of communications, is my understanding you right?
That's correct, let's say, somebody, you have the radio in the principal's office, and, and they hear shots in the building, they can push that button and be talking on a talk group back to 911, saying, "There's shots in our building." So, before you even get a 911 call, dispatcher already knows, and of course, you know, they would immediately send the, you know, the, you know, police to that area, but what's, what's nice is, they're not going to be on the police channel, you know, we can have a talk group, you know, for the school districts, but the police will be able to talk directly back to them, and that's very, very important, it's part of this. And that was, you know, we thought that was very important. There are safer school grants out there that you can put in for 25,000, you get automatically. And then there's bigger grants. So obviously, you know, the school districts continue to improve their radio systems, but this gives direct, you know, connection back to 911.
And you could add on to the system too. Some vendors have where you could add panic buttons in every classroom if you'd like. So, you know, obviously, we can't afford all of it, but it's a good initiative, I think, that we could build on. It's a good pilot program and we felt strongly enough to include it in our response.
Well, no, and it may be something as well, when you're talking about, I mean, safety is paramount, it may be something as well that, you know, schools, when you said safe school grants, you know, I know that, I know that school districts have used grants such as that to improve high definition camera systems, to secure the property, to secure the students and the staff. That may be something that, you know, as a part of this project, they could then choose to, as you say, add on to panic buttons in classrooms or things along those lines.
Yes.
Mr. Grady?
I'll finish it up. So what's next? Negotiations with the preferred vendor, you know, we're proposing to start those. Discuss funding options and bring the final proposal and contract to county manager and county council for approval. Finalize agreement process with the vendor. This is the easy part, negotiate the contracts, the hard part. You know, municipal and agency outreach, reaching out to every municipality and saying, hey, you know, here's what we're going to do, you know, do you want to be part of the system? Do you want to be part of the system and you're getting this many radios? If that's what council approves, then, you know, you're going to have to pay for the warranty, there's a one-year warranty, but we want you to buy a five-year warranty on it, so that, you know, we know these radios are being maintained. Another big thing is apply for grants. So the one thing, you know, as part of our contract we have right now is we have money in there to apply for the assistance of firefighter grant. So we bring in a special grant writer, we collect all the data with the county, but we have a special grant writer that's going to apply for grants for the portables and the mobiles, so trying to offset your cost. You don't find that out till, you know, next year, but we're going to apply for that grant and other grants that come up. And then, of course, start the implementation phase of the radio project. This is a tremendous amount of engineering and tremendous amount of work, you know. If county council moves forward with this and we're selected as your consultant, you'll see this every day, because it's a lot of work to get done, because we want to have the system turned on by the end of 2020. You know, and then, of course, you have to finalize all the paperwork into 2021, but we want to have the system up and running by the end of, end of the year. And that, sir, is all I have.
Other questions? Yes?
Yep, the timeline, the project timeline, you have through December 2019, RFP for the radio system and microwave system and award the contracts. So I would assume before you could award the contract, we have to have an idea of how we're going to pay for this, right?
Correct.
And it's the end of August now, so when are we going to start talking about that?
September 10th.
Next meeting.
Yeah, okay.
And we'll have more information for you at that meeting. And again, we'll bid the microwave on once we know who the, what system's on, we're going to have, but until we know how many tower sites, we can't bid that on.
Okay, Mr. Grady, is, you said this, this program can be added to. So the private and curricular schools, which have the same issues regarding an active shooter and if they can, will they know what the county is doing so they can contact you Fred and, you know, find out?
Yes.
How much it's going to cost them instead of going in a total different direction?
Yes, we already consulted with the LIU. They have a consultant that they brought on for safety, safety of schools and the school safety committee. And we ran this by them and they were very supportive of it. It was one of those things we had to put into the RFP to get pricing back, at least to have an idea of what it may cost potentially. But it certainly can be added on to and private schools are more than welcome to join in on the system if the county so wishes to either fund it or allow them to piggyback off of the contract pricing that we're able to negotiate.
Just in funding.
So, you know, again, they have a lot more avenues of grant funding, I believe, with the Safe Schools Initiative, grant funding they have now that the state is offering and the federal government. But it is a good initiative for them, you know, to put in for the funding.
Mr. O'Nellie has a question.
Yeah, we've done a number of those safer school grants. We got Williamsport School District money and some other title of the school district money, so we could assist them with a grant.
So I'm just curious, so we have two RFPs coming in, you're going to negotiate, but in those RFPs, they gave pricing, obviously we know. I'm just curious as to your thoughts of how much you're going to be able to negotiate price and the difference there versus what they already put in their RFP.
So there won't be much difference in the price, you know, on the base price, you know, we pretty much know what that's going to be. You know, it will be really, you know, do we want to, you know, add some additional paging coverage? Do we want to, you know, add an additional site, something like that? That's all it would be. So, you know, the numbers you saw up there, they're not going up. They're only going to go down, you know, I can guarantee you that.
Another clarifying question too, Mr. Grady. You said that your contract with the county ends once the contract is signed, but I'm looking at your next steps page. So you're still going to, MCM is going to help reach out to the municipalities and also apply for those grants?
Yes.
Specifically the volunteer firefighter grant?
Yes, assistance firefighter grant, yes.
Okay. Any other grants out there that are going to be?
That's the big one, assistance firefighter grant.
LSA funds available?
We already have that for the, for the tower site.
Okay.
So we've got 330,000 for the tower site.
Right, absolutely. However, for next year, for 2020?
It's certainly something we can apply for, yes.
That would, that's a suitable use for the LSA funds?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And then we'll also, there's some smaller grants we'll look at, you know, you have the Pennsylvania Crime Commission Grants, you know, they're $50,000 or less, but whatsoever out there, we will look for and, you know, try to, you know, reduce the overall capital costs for the county.
Okay, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sure we'll have more questions as we proceed, but thank you very much for the update.
You're welcome.
We appreciate that very much. Thank you, Mr. O'Nellie.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for my time.
Mr. O'Nellie, want to put the lights back up there, please?
Manager Pedri. I have a concern, not related to the upgrade, but a 911 question. Would you prefer for me to wait until the end to ask that question, because it's not related to the upgrade?
They're here now, it's over at the chair.
Okay, if I could ask that, first off, let me just say, it's more of a comment than a question in reference to the, I thought the presentation was very informative and excellent job. And I'll just say, as a council member, as a sitting person here, like I think this is something that we absolutely have to look at every single area of funding, everything we could do to make sure, because our 911 people do such an outstanding job. And when you're talking about policemen and firemen and people that are risking their lives, you know, I'm a father of three young boys, I'm with, you know, over 1,100 kids every day. Like when you pick up the phone and dial 911, and I may sound like a public service announcement here, but when you pick up the phone, if there's one thing in the world you want to know is going to work right, it's this. So when we talk about figuring out, how are we going to pay for this, how are we going to do this, this is one we better figure out, because the citizens of the county, their safety and security to me is paramount. When I got involved in this, one of my biggest concerns was, how am I going to make sure that my, my kids, my family, my neighbors, the kids at my school, that people are safe and that these firemen and policemen and emergency responders that are out there are able to do what they need to do to make sure that everybody, you know, gets to go home at night? So I think this has to be, we have to make sure we, you know, obviously work very diligently at, this is such an important initiative, and I think whatever we need to do, we have to get done. And that's, that's my statement on your presentation. My next question, having nothing to do with the upgrade. I got, I have been contacted by some constituents in my home area where I live from. It's a concern, give you the Reader's Digest version, in the Pittston Township area, the city of Pittston, as well as Jenkins Township. There's some controversy with a street, Tedrick Street, and there being three different areas of Tedrick Street throughout three different municipalities, okay? Particularly in the Pittston Township one, which is where the constituent came from, the concern is that the street was renamed to Jenkins, now the houses in Pittston Township are being renumbered, and there just seems to be a lot of confusion as to, you know, where was Pittston Township in the process, when were people informed? So I guess my question for you guys, with the great job that you do, would just be, I know everything that we do is in the interest of public, so we want to make sure that everybody is safe. Is there something that can be done to meet with the township, Pittston Township supervisors or to have some sort of a meeting, whether it's a public meeting, or something to answer the concerns of these people? Because the constituents that are contacting me or talking to me about things, you know, it's been their family home for 100 years and are they going to have to get a new deed done and their driver's license and all the things that change over with the new address. So I know I'm kind of asking you a big question, but what's?
Used to it.
What's the correct answer? And is there something that we can do as a county directly with Pittston Township to answer the citizens' concerns, maybe directly and in finality and say, here's how this occurs and here's why it occurs?
Okay, so first of all, I just want to talk about Pittston Township. We'll focus on that since that's the majority of your question. We met with the municipal officials from there. My staff conversed back and forth extensively. We presented a plan to Pittston City, Pittston Township and Jenkins. Tedrick Street was a nightmare. It was a mess for many years and through the inquiry committee, one of our top tasks was to reach out to these municipalities and start fixing these addressing issues. And we've been doing it. My staff is doing a phenomenal job with it. So with Pittston Township, we could certainly meet with the officials again, we could certainly meet with the residents, I'd be glad to have my staff go to a meeting, but we were upfront. We presented a plan. We got, received an email from one of the supervisors that said, go ahead, make the changes. We concur in conclusion with Pittston Township, Jenkins Township and Pittston City. I believe it's on Pittston City's agenda or soon to be voted on to adopt our recommendations as well. Under the state borough and township codes, they have the authority and the requirement to address a number of buildings. The county cannot force them to do it. We make recommendations, we assist them, we paid for the mailers. And the bottom line is, they gave us the green light, we sent out the mailers, the residents were notified. And I don't know if they want to renig on that now or what it is, but that's where we're at today.
And you know what, Fred, just to respond back to your, to your great answer to my question, I think maybe part of the issue is, maybe some of the residents in that area, as far as Pittston Township goes, are not aware that there was an email, the green light at the project.
I would assume that.
I think that's probably a big source of confusion, that the residents aren't aware of what the township role and it was and what, and what the county role is. I think that that's maybe where some of the questions come from. So I think that answer right there, that there was an email from a township supervisor stating, okay, we need to move forward with this. I mean, I think that's going to carry. But I just had the idea of talking with the township supervisors, so maybe they could state their case to their residents, so they understand, you know, what the purpose of this is and how it comes about.
Absolutely, we could attend a meeting, that's fine. We've been to them before, I've explained it hundreds of times across the county over my career since 2006. My staff does a great job with it. And again, we don't do anything, we don't make any changes typically without having approval of the municipal officials, because it's their duty and responsibility and their legal authority, not the county.
Absolutely. And I apologize, the neighborhood I grew up in is this nightmare street, but I grew up on Pine, I'm from Pine Street, not Tedrick Street, but I apologize.
I have some first responders here that can attest. I don't want to put them on the spot, they're my employees, but they can, they can attest that Tedrick Street has been an issue. Because it's split up and you have duplicate ranges with duplicate street names, it's a recipe for a disaster. So we don't want to change these, these street names or change somebody's address, inconvenience them for it. But like I always say, we don't send a police, fire or EMS to a P.O. box. We send it to a 911 identifiable address to a structure, not to a P.O. box. So the difference between a mailing address and a 911 address is critical.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wiko. And Anderson?
This was on our agenda last time in the work session and then the chamber asked to remove it because they weren't at that point ready to present, because of the timeframe, et cetera. So it's back on our agenda?
Yes, sir. So, Mr. Chairman, County Council, Mr. County Manager, good evening. I'm Wiko Van Gendern, I'm the President of the Greater Wilkes-Barre Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here tonight along with Rob Miracle, Lucibia, Brian McManus, Frank Lohman for Miracle Commercial Real Estate. And we're here today on behalf of the Greater Wilkes-Barre Industrial Fund to request a 10-year extension of the Keystone Opportunity Zone designation for the former Poseidon property located on 280 Crestwood Drive in the Crestwood Industrial Park. The Poseidon property currently has a Koz designation that will expire on December 31st, 2019. The requested extension would run from January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2029. This resolution requires approval from all three local taxing bodies, Wright Township, Crestwood School District and Luzerne County. And we have obtained approval resolutions already from Wright Township and the Crestwood School District. And now we're asking for the Luzerne County Council's approval, which will allow us to take this request extension of the Koz status for the Poseidon property to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. I've provided a one-page briefing sheet for each of you, but to provide a little bit of background, back in 1998, Poseidon pools declared bankruptcy, which created in its wake an abandoned, environmentally impaired 27-acre site with unpaid back taxes, unpaid debt. And it was occupied by a vacant and obsolete 300,000 square foot industrial building at the entrance of the Crestwood Industrial Park. To facilitate the return of the impaired and nonproductive properties and make them competitive to attract new and beneficial businesses and turn a brownfield site, such as the Poseidon property, back into productive use, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania created the Koz program. The Poseidon site was exactly the type of site which the Koz was created for. It has long had the Koz designation, and while it's been on the market for years, it's always known that the site must be remediated and reclaimed before it could be turned into productive use. That process proved to be extremely complex, time-consuming and expensive. And to date, to put it in perspective, the Poseidon Brownfield Site Reclamation Project has required more than $2 million in environmental mitigation work to clean up and redevelop the property. The chamber, through the industrial fund affiliate, assumed all the Poseidon property financial obligations and cleanup obligations with the goal of returning it to the site to productive use, so that it can be again used for positive assets. In doing so, the chamber systematically undertook the site cleanup and redevelopment, including the demolition of the vacant building, completion of environmental remediation and excavation and grading to prepare the new building pads for development. While most of the work has been accomplished, we still need to resolve some final regulatory issues, specifically the finalization of Act Two clearance through the PA Department Environmental Protection, DEP. We are now at the five-yard line and are poised to bring the Poseidon property back to productive and economic use. So upon approval of the Act Two clearance, the chamber will proceed with the sale of the property to Miracle Commercial Real Estate Services, Miracle. In turn, Miracle plans to invest $6 million into the construction of a speculative 200,000 square foot industrial building, which will result in new business attraction, the creation of approximately 170 jobs and positive economic benefit for the Crestwood Industrial Park and the community. Approval of the Koz extension is a vital part of the property's redevelopment strategy, allowing the redevelopment site to be competitive in attracting a beneficial tenant. In addition, I want to note that the chamber will use all the proceeds of the sale to Miracle to pay the final 925,000 county HUD BDLP loan in full, as well as more than $400,000 in principal taxes, remaining back taxes that were originally from the Poseidon bankruptcy. So in summary, the sale of the Poseidon site will result in the following benefits to Luzerne County. Number one, it's going to facilitate the redevelopment and reuse of a fallow property that has not been productive for the past 20 years. Number two, it's going to conclude the chamber's commitment to satisfy all nine of our county HUD BDLP loans, that totally more than $7 million that's been already, that's going to be repaid to LC OCD. And already we've paid 6.1 million. With the close now of this deal, it's another $925,000 paid to the county upon the conclusion of Poseidon. It's also going to resolve Poseidon's open tax obligations with more than $400,000 paid back to Luzerne County, Wright Township and the Crestwood School District from the proceeds of the sale. These taxes, by the way, are unpaid Poseidon back taxes that the chamber will pay. Number four, so bring back new jobs and expand the local economy benefit already provided by the five business parks developed by the chamber that already include over 200 businesses resident in those parks that have created over 12,000 jobs and today, close to $10 million in taxes paid annually to Luzerne County, the host townships and the local school districts. By the way, that includes six Koz sites with companies on Elmwood Road that have come off the Koz and now provide a tax base to include Cornell, Sealy, PepsiCo, AEP, Mission Foods, Cardinal Glass, all of which stayed after their Koz. And then finally, it'll provide a fresh anchor, a new building essentially in the front entrance of the Crestwood Industrial Park, setting the tone for a new generation of businesses into one of our oldest legacy industrial parks. This resolution requires approval from all three local taxing bodies, Wright Township, Crestwood School District and Luzerne County. And again, we've obtained unanimous approval resolutions from Wright Township and Crestwood. We're now asking for Luzerne County approval, which will allow us to take this request extension of the Koz for the Poseidon property to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Thank you for your consideration in this work session. Before I take any questions, I'm going to ask if Rob, Miracle or Lucibia have any additional comments they'd like to make.
Thank you, Wiko. I'm Lucibia from Miracle Commercial. The only thing that I would add, two important points, I guess. One is this site is significantly environmentally impaired, as Wiko has stated. Historically, it goes way back before his time, it goes back to the Eberhart Faber situation and then the Poseidon situation after that. The second point is, under the Act Two clearance requirement under DEP, there needs to be anywhere from two to eight consecutive quarters of monitoring done in order to get a clean bill of health on the site. So while we're asking for the Koz, there's still a little bit of additional, not a little bit, a lot of additional work that needs to be done in order to get that DEP Act Two clearance finalized. The third thing that I would say is, we at Miracle have historically done speculative buildings and we've built buildings on spec and attracted tenants and jobs that come with that. And we've done it 134 times, I think this will be 135th building. So once again, we've committed to do a speculative building on that site just as soon as the Act Two clearance is issued by the state and that we can close with the chamber. And as Wiko said, the benefits are both job creation and some economic benefit back to the county.
Questions?
What do you plan, Bill? What do you plan on building, Bill?
We will commit upon the approval of the DEP Act Two, a speculative investment-grade building in excess of 200,000 square feet. Right now, it's programmed for 217,000 square feet.
Like a warehouse or something?
No, it'll be, it'll be a, it'll be a spec building, which can have any variety. It could be a CVS Caremark, it could be, you know, a variety. Right now, we have such a wide variety of uses in life sciences and health services and manufacturing. We're finding a resurgence of manufacturing in Luzerne County. So it will be adaptable for a variety of uses.
Could you put a big Class A office building up there?
The, one of the things that we found pretty quick success with recently is the ability for us to build spec buildings with a conversion for office. For example, in Center Point, we have Maximus and C3I Healthcare. We've done Genpac and a new company, Ubiquity, which has, you know, an international company. So we're finding conversion.
Effectively, we're building flexible buildings that can accommodate a wide range of users. And we use about 300 brokers that we've had experience with for over 30 years, bringing opportunities to us. We have continued to improve the facilities and the investment-grade nature of them. And with it, with a balance sheet that we have today, we can invest in those buildings and bring in higher-quality employment.
That's what I'd like you to do, bring in higher-quality employment. There's enough warehouses in the building, any area, you know that.
Again, it's not expected to be anticipated as only a warehouse. There's a wide variety. We believe our employment base in Luzerne County is the widest variety from medical, from surgeons, all the way through a whole variety of uses. If you want to go through it, I actually have a detail of all the different types of jobs that we employ in our buildings.
Will you be recruiting the company too?
Will we be recruiting? Surely.
So you'll be recruiting the company that comes in?
A lion's share of the construction. Right now, we have about 16.2 million square feet in our portfolio, over 16,000 jobs in Luzerne County. That generates more than $725 million a year in annual wages for Luzerne County. We pay taxes in Luzerne County right now in excess of $1 million. With the expiration of some of the additional programs, we'll have another $1 million in the next 10 years, they'll be, by the end of 10 years from today, already committed, will be another $1 million per year. So as a whole, it could be an opportunity to think about the funding you just talked about before. There'll be another $1 million 10 years from today, accelerating, starting in 2020.
One more. When you're done up there, will you come back to the city of Wilkes-Barre and start to clean up that place?
We're looking at the city of Wilkes-Barre right now, an opportunity. We've just made a large investment in Hazelton for opportunity fund land and the federal fund land for the Pagnati Properties and Beltrami Properties, and we expect to do an equal Center Point development in the Hazelton marketplace. And we're looking at that in, we just set up a fund, an opportunity built throughout the whole, all of northeastern Pennsylvania.
You know, that old Vulcan Iron Works is up and the old Silk Mill is half down across from Shields is up. You know, that's your old hometown down there, you know?
Correct.
You know that.
I do.
So come back to the area. Do some work damage.
I'm looking forward to a lot of investment, and we have an awful lot of land right now. We held an awful lot of tens of millions of square feet of opportunity for future development in Luzerne County. It's our home, and we expect to be here. We have about 300 employees that we employ in the marketplace and expect to be in the region for decades to come.
Mr. Os.
I'd just like to add two quick points. One is, the K O Z benefits are ultimately offered to the employers that come in with the jobs in tow. So without that, it's really an uphill battle to be able to attract quality employers. The second thing is, to Rob's point, because we're building on spec and because of the inherent risk in that, we aggressively, aggressively market. We have a marketing team and a leasing team. We spend a lot of money going after the types of users that, Mr. Urban, that you referred to. So we're aggressively marketing.
Mr. Os.
Very good. Gentlemen, thanks everybody for coming tonight. Mr. Sebia, a question for you, actually, a couple of them. How much does the firm, do you expect the mitigation will cost? You said there's still a couple lingering issues there with the property, or, Mr. Miracle, I don't know, can you explain that?
Most of the contamination is complete. The Chamber had hired Quad Three to try to complete an Act Two. There was some lingering issues, and they closed out the wells. I think the grant funds ended. And they closed out the wells, and they never finished the final Act Two.
They stopped the project.
Stopped the process. We hired Labella engineers, went back out, and did a further additional site characterization. And with it, we put in 28 test borings, additional soil samples, three ground monitoring wells, did soil vapor sampling, and met with the E P, walked through the results. And they've said to us, it's required because the wells were closed and the timeframe had lapsed, that we need to somewhat start the process over. So we need to immediately put, with approval, be able to go in and put additional wells in. And then we need to get, on average, it's usually eight quarters that you need. Because of the historic work that's been put in place, they said to us that if it comes up clean within two quarters to four quarters, eight quarters. So it's really D E P-dependent, depending upon the results of the groundwater monitoring wells. And if they come back clean, we could be as early as two.
So, okay. But the frame, so hopefully that doesn't happen, but...
We believe, we believe we've done this site characterization. D E P has reviewed our information. They feel confident. Again, we don't know until we get the results, but we have all confidence that we believe. And we've done this work before in some remediation. So we believe we're going to be able to get through it. It's been a long process.
Two years or so.
Correct. So the benefit would be...
So you're taking on a property with no guarantee of revenue for that time?
No, we won't, we won't close until we know we have Act Two. So until, so right now, we will be in a bay. We'll spend the money to go forward and have Labella...
Can you explain that, how much the testing we'll do and the bore hauling and the wells? What are you looking at? Unless it's privileged information, I get that too.
There's going to be between $50,000 and $75,000 in initial review.
Thank you, everybody.
Other questions?
Yes, I do. First of all, I'm very happy to see, Mr. Miracle, you are willing to make this investment in the Crestwood Industrial Park. I'm sure the residents of Wright Township are going to be happy when they find out about this as well. My question is, you know, you're talking about the $400,000 in back taxes, correct? I'm wondering, do we have an idea what percentage of that is actually owed to Luzerne County? Do you have any kind of a breakdown?
About 150.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't think it's that high. If I read in paper correctly, I think they said the school district was $270,000.
Yes, so if you take a look at this, it's basically about, total, about 450 in total. About 270 goes to the...
School district.
It was 100, oh, it was 100, somewhere around 130, 40 going to the county.
And you still have the municipality to get their share of the back taxes.
20,000 to them. And that's in the principal, by the way, so...
Right.
Thank you.
And that will be paid in full. Actually, in the case of, because in the case of Crestwood, because we feel very comfortable that, you know, Rob and Miracle are going to do this, you know, we're actually moving forward with that payment to the Crestwood School District because they need the money.
We do too.
Well, we need the money. You just heard about the 911 radio system.
We go, you acquired a property 20 years ago?
Well, acquired, it was basically at the point bankrupt in 1998. And the stay agreement took place June 15th, actually, of 1999.
Right. What took so long, though, 20 years to mitigate a property?
It was partly because I wasn't here until...
Well, Bob was there. Bob was the chairman of the board. How many years, Bob? Chairman of the board at the Chamber. You were the chairman of the board?
No, I wasn't the chairman, no.
Chamber, Chamber of Commerce, right?
I was on C E G for 15 years. The property really had legacy issues from Everhart-Faber. When they did the original remediation, there was lead contamination that was removed as part of the $2 million remediation, with the help of D E P.
Just a long time, Weiko, though, a long time. How long you been on the Chamber, Weiko?
It's now five years.
Five years, so five years is too long.
Yeah. And you might recall, five years ago, one of the first things I did my first week on the job, I came in front of the council and I said a couple of things. One, I said that we pay back on the debt. And I think we just talked about that. It's basically, just to put it in perspective, it's going to be, we do this deal, it's $7, $7 million of debt now repaid back of basically the real estate transaction that we did. All of it went back to the paying of the debt. We got through all the commercial debt, we got through now all the county debt, with the exception of this. We got through the city and township debts, taxes, basically cleared through in a total of five years, just shy of $12 million worth of debt. So just want to make sure that you realize that, because, I mean, when you take a look at this thing, we do, as I said five years ago, we want to get out of the real estate business, we want to go back into making sure that we help developers develop these sites, create jobs, attract businesses to the area. I think you might have seen that in the past couple of years, too, with some of the work that we've done with developers like Miracle and North Point to attract some of these businesses to the area. I think the other thing I wanted to point out, too, is that the other thing that we're doing as a Chamber is that we're providing portals now to all of the industrial parks, too. Because I think one of the biggest critical issues that we're going to have in the area is going to be on the workforce side. Good news, we've got probably about 3,000 or 4,000 jobs coming in the area. The issue is where are we going to get those folks? Where are we going to make sure that we connect the 5,000, 50,000 college students we have in the area and have them recognized and we have jobs for them here in the county?
We have, one more question. Do you ever come up with answers for that 960,000-year notice?
Yeah, so that's the 1993...
Agreement, right, right.
Developers agreement. And if you take a look at the Developers Agreement, there's two ways that you facilitate the Developers Agreement. Either you put somebody aside for the per acre, or you resolve the traffic situation. And I think, as you know, in some of the things, if you read through that 1993 Developers Agreement, with a lot of the work that we've done with Middle Road, as you know, we've brought 42 acres to Pendott to create that South Valley Parkway. And we're working with, she's not here, we're working with North Point, in this particular case, to look at an alternative exit out of Hanover Ridge. And then also taking a look at overall traffic mitigation in the area. And I think that's where we're resolving it, and, you know, certainly working a lot with Dave and his team to make sure that we do that.
I hope Dave brings that to us, so we can review it. 960,000 that was owed to the county.
Any other questions regarding this proposal? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
If I could not, not for the gentleman, but I'm going to C C A P last time, I attended a seminar, too, about different... I'm going to pass this around to members. And just, again, I understand, I think this is an acceptable use for K O Zs, but we, I think we're using the same tool out of the bag all the time. And I encourage you all, just take a look at that in your free time, you have to look at it right now. But there's just different things out there that I think are underutilized, and it's take a team effort to really seek them out and uncover them. So just some food for thought, not necessarily pertaining to this situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shandra and Mr. Bolesik. This item says, a discussion with Luzerne County Transportation Board members. As a result, a request from Ms. Houk and some information that was in the papers. We had several questions regarding a name that was proposed. The information was, the questions were passed along to the L C T A gentlemen and asked them to respond to that when we met this evening. Mr. Shandra is the board chair, and I ask you to make those responses.
Yes, thank you. We appreciate having the opportunity to come and present to council. I have with me our solicitor, Joe Bolesik, our assistant solicitor, excuse me, Matt Carmini, and our deputy chair, Mike Seflow, and we have several of our board members here as well.
Would you introduce them, please?
Yes, we have Lynette Volano, secretary, Gary Polaski, Polakowski, who's head of our personnel committee, Joe Padovan, who's our treasurer, and attorney Sean Robbins was in, attorney Sean Robbins as well. Thank you. I think each of you have a copy of a letter and a copy of the questions, which I'm going to read aloud. It says, "Dear Chairman McGinley and members of council, I want to apologize on behalf of myself and the board for the announcement that was made to rename the L C T A to NEPTA. It's my understanding that discussion to rename the authority was started about four years ago, and it was the understanding of this board that the renaming was tied to a proposal to consolidate or merge transit systems in the region. We are in very early discussions with COLTS about opportunities to share cost and resources as a first step in working together and have retained the services of an experienced transit consultant to further explore all of our options. The board was not aware, was not aware, that was planned to announce, nor did the board approve the announcement of a name at the event to celebrate the purchase of the Murray Project on August 1st, 2019. As such, I've directed our solicitor to investigate the details of how the name change announced, announcement came about and report to the boards or appropriate corrective actions could be put in place to avoid further miscommunication. The authority cannot and will not change the name of L C T A to any other name without the full cooperation, input, and approval from Luzerne County Council." You have made the board aware questions that you, excuse me, you would like answered and discussed at your work session on today. Before responding to your questions, I want to state on behalf of the authority, that remains our goal to provide massive transit service in Luzerne County, which best meets the needs of county residents. We realize that achieving our goal is only possible by the continued financial aid and support given to the authority by action of county council. As a board, we strive to respond to all support the authority in meeting public transportation needs within the county. With that, there were five or six questions, of which we will respond. Due to the time constrictions, the following answers are based in part on information provided by L C T A management staff. The board may supplement the answers following further inquiry. Where did the name NEPTA originate? Management staff of L C T A suggested this name as part of a possible step toward consolidation of services with other transit providers. Did the L C T A board of directors authorize the name? Beginning in 2015, the board was advised by management staff about the desirability of rebranding in conjunction with possible consolidation and regionalization of transit services, and included the concept of rebranding in its strategic plan for the authority in 2018, but did not authorize or approve the announcement of a name change on August 1st, 2019. Who applied for the new NEPTA name? Mr. Norm Gavlick, our executive director. What procedure was used to obtain the name? Mr. Gavlick filed an application to register NEPTA as a fictitious name on May 25th, 2018, with the Pennsylvania Department of State Corporation Bureau. What entity paid the fee for the name? L C T A registration fee was paid by L C T A for $70. Was anyone consulted regarding the name change? Although the name of NEPTA was used at an event to mark the authority's ownership of the Murray complex, the board did not authorize or approve the announcement of a name change on August 1st, 2019. Prior to that date, management had discussed the proposal with the board during the course of board updates by staff. It was referenced as a rebranding marketing measure for further consolidation as a strategic plan goal. Staff responded that they informed various officials of the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration about rebranding. To date, no formal final board action on such change has been taken.
Those are the questions that we look forward to Mr. Shandra and the solicitor of the L C T A to respond to. Any other questions from any member of the council?
I have a couple.
Absolutely.
Thank you for coming to speak with us. I appreciate the fact that the board is here. As I always used to say when I was in charge of the A B C interviews, we expect our board members to be the eyes and ears of council. And so I do appreciate that you're here. It was quite a surprise to see the news on August 1st, and that's why I asked the question. So I'm sure you're all aware that you are incorporated and are supposed to incorporation as an entity that's, you know, bonded by Luzerne County. So the question I have, I guess, is, Mr. Gavlick applied for the name, for the rebrand, or for the fictitious name?
Yes.
How is L C T A involved in that? Because I believe if you, as an authority, were going to apply for something like that, you'd have to submit some government authorization forms and some things. I think there'd be more of a technicality than, say, $70 and one person submitting an application.
I can just...
Would you?
I think that's our whole presentation today. There's no doubt that rebranding was something that the board discussed. There's no doubt that, and I think everybody here, you've seen visible signs. And I don't want to lobby to answer your question. But we brought night service back in. I couldn't help but, we sat with, listening to the presentation of Rob Miracle and everybody. We've made links to provide service to industrial parks. We've tried to connect our service so it better integrates with COLTS. We've done a lot of things... We've done a lot of things that have been positive. Probably the one thing that you could give us a very critical score on is we haven't been communicating, and we realized that as this thing unfolded. And I'm not trying to evade your, your question, that was discussed, but we didn't take the critical step of communicating, and that's what we're trying to do here tonight. We don't want this to be seen as some gesture that we're out there as if we're running away on our own to do whatever we feel like, independent of anybody's input. And I think some of that may have gotten a little too enthusiastic by some of the people that we place in positions, without necessarily trying to, I don't know how to say it, uh, maybe they got ahead of themselves, and, and so we just wanna put this back in the proper sphere.
Context, sure.
And context, and one of the things I know in our discussions, and we hope coming here tonight, is we get your input. If you don't think anything we're doing meets with the expectations that the council has for the authority, uh, we're suggesting, and not only suggesting, we're, we're encouraging that we'll be more communicative, we'll, we'll take every step we need, and we missed this one. This is one we just missed. And I agree with you, the, the proper procedure would be to take a number of steps that weren't taken with that announcement, and, and that's the unfortunate.
To answer, to, to expand on, and, uh, the answer to your question, Ms. Houck, is that the, the authority gave our solicitor, um, um, the ability to, to research a name, I guess it was going back four or five years.
Yeah, two thousand and fifteen.
And the actual fictitious name was, um...
Northeast Pennsylvania Transit Agency.
Agency.
But that, that was sort of like put on a shelf for...
Right. We, we learned aft, we learned afterward, two additional names were then registered by Ms., Mr. Gavlick unbeknownst to our solicitor. So, um, I hope that answers that question.
Well, it kind of does, um, but, I mean, I, I think there is a little more to the question. Um, certainly, we've gone through some things with, um, other authorities, we have the flood protection authority, we amended their articles of incorporation when they wanted to make certain changes.
Right.
To those articles. And so, you know, having gone through that with another authority, we certainly know that we could make changes to that article, the articles of incorporation, there could be changes made. In fact, when Homeral started in twenty, twenty twelve, when we came in and we looked at the board, the commissioners had actually appointed some people from Hazelton to the L C T A with the idea that there was going to be a merger from Hazel, uh, with the Hazelton Transit Authority.
That's correct.
And so, you know, there was a period of time there when we really thought it was gonna come to be. That was a long time ago, now that was seven years ago.
Yeah.
So, we're kind of, like, looking at, at branding, uh, yourselves as, uh, the N of B T A, is kind of looking back at what could have happened then, and maybe looking ahead to what, what else might happen. But, you know, the essential point to me is that, as a legal entity, you're an authority, and you have a specific name, and, um, I don't know that you took any action, I think it was an action taken by an individual. So my question still remains, how is L C T A involved with that name? Because the authority didn't take any action, you didn't vote on it, you didn't actually officially act as an authority to do anything with that. So who owns the name, Mr. Gavlick?
Mr. Gavlick owns the name, but...
Okay.
In the candor of the moment here, I can't say it differently. He has many times discussed the idea of, uh, how would I say, of rebranding?
Sure.
And it's not a new thing, but what was totally new and surprised was that, um, August first meeting was not scripted through the board, nor was it scripted through, I'll say, the solicitors of the authority, because there would have been other steps that had to be taken, which I would caution, but that didn't happen, and so we're, we're in a way trying to say it to you, we wanna put the genie back in the bottle here, and we don't wanna get off on the wrong step that suggests we're going this way, and you want us to go that way. And just to, to point out, and again, I, I may sound like a lobbyist, I don't want to, but, when that first came about, we took over the, uh, shared ride program, which at that time was a county department, and that integration into the L C T A was pretty seamless. But that's where Murray comes into play, because we've kinda outgrown the space, and we're sort of infringing on your goodwill because we use space at the airport, so I think our, our motives are good, our intentions are good, our communication skills need to get better.
And I don't want you to think that, that this is a criticism of the entire operation. I think since two thousand and twelve, I've seen tremendous change in the operation of the organization. I think there are a lot of good things, I think you have wonderful board members.
Yeah.
I think there's a lot more transparency than there used to be as well, with it.
I would, I would agree.
Um, but, you know, uh, as you said, we wanna make sure that we're all doing, doing the right things, and, and respecting each other. So the county is the founding agency for your authority.
Correct.
And I think that we just need to hear some more communication from you. But with that said, you do have, you know, authority over a lot of the operations, you know, and so moving into Murray complex and things like that, although we'd like to know about it, you know, those are certainly things that are under your, under your own jurisdiction. I would just like to know, and this is really my final question, how much money has been spent on this idea of rebranding?
I, I can't give you a number, um, we, we effectively have had some, I guess promotional items, uh, prepared, I don't know how they translate in dollars, but at this juncture, you know, that's...
So were those expenses approved by the board, or have they not come to you yet?
I think they were just part of administrative operations.
Okay.
The whole idea, as I said, was, I think we got ahead of ourselves here.
Okay.
And, and we weren't...
No.
We've taken steps just in a very brief period of time to discuss the thing that I'm saying to you tonight, we gotta get better at our communications with, with county council.
In addition to that, you know, we have, and we mentioned that this came about because the possible ability of consolidation. In two thousand and ten, just a little bit of history, in two thousand and ten, Pendott did a study on consolidation of, uh, COLTS and L C T A, and, uh, you know, just sharing some numbers, it was over a half a million dollars worth of savings. From a business perspective, I mean, that gets our, that gets our attention. We have, and, and recently, in the last couple of months, with, with all the activity of the potential of the turnpike money going away, we felt that that's a step in the right direction, and quite honestly, there, there are difficult, uh, there are difficult waters to navigate, you know, we're not all transit experts. So we secu, we secured, uh, a, uh, the old deputy director out of Harrisburg to help us navigate these waters and, and help us look to get closer to COLTS. Uh, we're beginning with a procurement project that could maybe save both our agencies in excess of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, just in, in one particular business practice. So we're continuing, there's a, you're right, there is a, a lot going on, and, and, and quite honestly, if we did get ahead of ourselves, we apologize, we're continuing our investigation, and internally, we'll take appropriate action.
Thank you.
Just, one...
Mr. Urban.
We, we all, I think what you need to also include is Hazelton Transit, because we're, we're paying a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars here to Hazelton Transit from the budget here. And that was, uh, you know, I think they, they were coming on board, we appointed people to the board, they started to participate with, with your board, and all at once they left.
I don't think the idea was as enthusiastic we supported at that time, and it wasn't on our end.
Right.
We had a door open, but we couldn't make people walk in, so.
Right.
If they, actually...
I did hear a call, Mr. Urban, we, we had meetings at the time, I know you participated, and we made every effort to, that was one of the things, to bring more participation in the...
Right, into the county.
...agency itself, it just didn't work out.
If I could just say, 'cause I was involved in that in early two thousand and twelve when we were looking at the A B Cs, um, what I was told by, uh, the L C T A was that the people, there were three people appointed from Hazelton, but they never actually attended a meeting, it never actually came to be. But I mean, that's a lot, there's been a lot of talk about it. I just think when you're looking at, if you're looking at merging, I mean, collaborating is one thing, but if you're looking at merging these agencies, there're gonna be some tech, legal technicalities that have to be, it's gonna be more than just printing a new sign and, and picking a new label.
I couldn't agree with you.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry.
Mr. Haas has a question.
Gentlemen, thanks for coming out, really appreciate it, all board members and staff as well. Um, I attended the Aug., the August first unveiling of the Murray complex, it's very impressive, uh, the new site is fantastic, and even the rebranding, I, I know, just like Mrs. Houck talked about, I know it's been a long time discussion, and nothing's set in stone, so, I, I'm not offended, I'm, I'm, I'm just one of the eleven council members, but you talk about restoring good graces, you know, I don't think that has to be done either. But what I, I, I was wondering, I looked at Mr. McGinley's questions, at least I think then, you put these questions together. I was looking online for your minutes, I didn't see the minutes posted on our website. And with our, our two thousand and twelve policies and procedures that Mrs. Houck actually was the chair of, you know, our, our A B Cs are supposed to post their meetings, they're supposed to post the minutes, post the schedule, the folks involved, and...
I think in their case, they're on their website, and it links to the...
It links, I still can't find it.
Not on the website.
Are they not?
They're not on the website.
They're not?
They used to be on the website.
Yeah. And it might be something you wanna look into, because, I mean, I'm pretty tech savvy, but I had a hard time finding it, and, um...
The I T and the operation.
'Cause I, I think all these, I think all these questions that were even asked in this question, I think they could have been answered just by looking through the minutes, so if they were on there, I think that would go a long way, but otherwise, um, you and the staff, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
You undo this, what, what, seventy bucks and send a request down to, uh, Harrisburg again, and, and undo this?
Well, we'll, we'll, I'm trying to tell you, there hasn't been board action, so there's no...
Right, but, but, but I mean, you, you've gotta officially get it off the books in Harrisburg.
No, it's, it's...
You can own the name.
It's not on...
I can own the name, okay.
Well, that's the question that I have. Mr. Gavlick is the owner of the name by fact that the form has his name, et cetera, but the L C T A paid the fee.
Well, that's what we're told, so we're, that's one of the things we'll check into further.
I don't know, he could be the owner of the name, and another entity be paying the fee.
I understand.
Any other questions for the gentleman?
Just wanna thank everyone, and again, thank you.
Oh, we thank you for your efforts, and obviously, we thank you for your outlook and the things in regards to transportation, I think you've done a lot of good things, especially in light of some of the different progress that's going on throughout the, the county, anyway, so we appreciate that. Your communication, I think, would be something that probably, hopefully, we both can work on and make sure it works a little better.
It will.
And if there's something that you need from us, please send it forward.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, moving over to the backside of the page, I would ask, in light of the timeframe, if there's no report for the committee, please state that, and we'll move on. Ms. Wakis, Act Thirteen?
See, I have no report, but we will be, it looks like we'll be meeting Wednesday.
All right. Ms. Wakis, again.
Uh, yes, we had a very successful, as you can tell by tonight's appointments, we had a very successful interview session, and, and I just echo with what Bob's been said about the quality of candidates, and we'll just continue as more people apply, we'll, um, continue doing what we're doing.
Thank you. Budget, finance, and audit, uh, we don't have a meeting scheduled yet, but we will have one to, to review the audit, and then we'll invite the auditor to come in to a work session to go over the information with the full council. Mr. Haas?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Ms. Wakis?
Uh, nothing to report, we're waiting for those appraisals.
Okay. Ms. Houck?
Nothing for strategic initiatives, but county code review, we'll be meeting before our next, uh, council meeting on September, um, September.
Thank you. Mr. Haas, Applied Properties?
Applied Properties, meeting later September.
Riverfront Parks, may, the only information I received, I forwarded out to council on that with regards to the programs that were scheduled there, and there's been no further information from Plains Township Tith Committee. Public comment? Public comment? Mr. Gesitis?
Now, a couple of things. When relative to the proposed name change, what's the ultimate purpose of that anyhow? All right?
I think you should have asked that question about five minutes ago.
What?
That's, no, I'm sorry.
I, I, I heard all that.
Okay.
All right? That's just the question. And, um, relative to the nine eleven, any system you look at for purchase or attempt to purchase, what's its weakness? They all give the strengths, but what's its weakness? And you better figure that one out. Okay? The other question is, you've heard the Chamber of Commerce up here and Bob Miracle, all right? There's no issue with Bob Miracle, he can do what he wants with whatever he buys, but the issue is, to this council, is what the chamber is requesting, an extension, not what Bob Miracle is gonna do with the property, okay? The other thing is, any money relative to the industrial fu, uh, fund comes from the taxpayer, whether it's Washington, or Harrisburg, or here, all right? That's people's money, all right? What's the price of the sale, all right? It hasn't been sold yet, but Bob was up here doing a, a selling job, okay? But this is an issue relative to the chamber, not Bob Miracle, okay? The tax pa, uh, back taxes, why the hell wouldn't they pay a long time ago? Where, why was the lien put against the property? Why wasn't it up for a tax sale? Huh? Somebody's getting preferential treatment, all right, consistently, all right? How many millions have you already approved to the chamber and written it off? Quite a few, okay? Whose benefit is this? Is this to the benefit of the chamber, or is this to the benefit of the, uh, of Miracle? Okay? You know, there's a lot of games always being played, that's part of business, but the chamber comes here with their hat in her hand, and they're crying tall all the time, okay? So there's consequently, uh, a lot of money due relative to taxes to the county, to the schools, and whoever else, but it doesn't seem that anybody's ever anxious to collect it, all right? They let it go by the, you know, the blind side. But that's all I wanted to say. You better find out what the issue is, and who's doing what, and for whom.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Shiner.
Norm Gavlick and the Transportation Authority have come a long way in the past couple of years, and it's between the members of the board and Norm Gavlick and his leadership. And I am thrilled to death to hear the name, rebranding, announced in the paper. Now whether it was all approved or done the way it probably should have been, to me, doesn't matter. What matters most is that they're looking ahead, they're looking to the future, which is what has to be done. In southeastern Pennsylvania, you have SEPTA, which is the Philadelphia and surrounding counties, and they merged together and made a great transportation, uh, system down there. And the thoughts of, of pushing towards something like that up in this area, to me, is, is welcomed and inviting. Um, when I first started getting involved in what goes on in this county, and I found out that Luzerne County Transportation Authority didn't service all of Luzerne County, I couldn't believe it. I thought, well then, why are they called that if they're not? But it is what it is, it's Luzerne County. Uh, but I think it's time for a rebranding, and I think, uh, with moving to the intermodal center, and as I say, the direction they've taken it with the night routes and, and, and added, uh, transportation, free bus rides when, uh, Mr. Pedry had the Rock the River concerts going on, I think it's great, they're really doing a good job. On the nine-one-one upgrade system, it was said that the municipalities are going to be provided with a certain amount of equipment, but that the additional equipment will have to be purchased by the municipalities. I'd like to know what the cost for each person that equipment would be under the overall purchase plan. And I think the people are still in the room, so if I can get an answer to that, please, I'd appreciate it.
Are you done?
Yes, I am, thank you.
I, I don't have it, so I, I... I, I don't have it, so I, the gentleman in the back...
We can't give a definitive number at this point for that. That's through the contract negotiation phase. This was just a budgetary quote estimate of the overall project.
Not even a rough estimate of what it would cost per person if additional firefighters or police wanted radios?
No, because, you know, we're still under the RFP review and contract negotiations, so it would be appropriate to release that now. Once it's done, then yes, I could provide that number two at that time, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Mr. Griffith.
A couple of brief points. When we get into the work, next work session, or possibly the code review committee, I'd like to see if we could get the format for the position budget squared away, so we don't have the issue that we had last year with the comparative figures not being put in the position budget that we've had year after year after year. And I know we worked, this council's worked hard at trying to get that to happen. I would like to see some kind of resolution or something made to that, that mandates that the manager submit that budget according to the charter. That gives us comparative figures, so we see what the salary increases are from year to year, so that the public has an idea of, you know, that's our biggest part of the budget. I think it's something like sixty-five or seventy million dollars, this county pays in salaries and benefits. So that's pretty important information for the public to have. So if they could get, if you could consider that at the next work session or code review committee. Also, the ACE Commission should be required to submit a budget to the manager for council approval. I noticed in the paper the other day that they're talking about monies for these special attorneys that are being hired for, that were hired for the review of ethics complaints. The ACE Commission never had a budget. They should have had a budget. When I was on that commission, I strived to have them put a budget in place, so that we have allocated monies if the commission needed it. The commission never submits a budget to this council for approval. They should do that. If you're going to get money from the taxpayers to pay for attorneys, then this council should be approving that money. And not only should this council be approving it, but the expenditures that happen by that ACE Commission should be approved at a public meeting, and it is not. We don't know how much we pay those attorneys, other than what's in the contract, but they're paid monthly. That should be approved by that commission at a monthly meeting, or at their annual, semi-annual meeting, whenever they meet, to approve their expenditures. We had to, as the Home Rule Study Commission, we had to approve expenditures at a public meeting. I don't know why the ACE Commission is exempt from all those guidelines. Something the code review committee could look at. Why are there no more budget transfers posted? Last year, we used to have budget transfers posted online when the manager transfers money. We don't see that anymore. Does council get notified when there's a budget transfer? If they do, that should be posted online, so that we know what's done. According to the charter, it has to happen within five days. I don't see those anymore. Now, since the website's been revamped, maybe that's gone away, but that should be put back up. So when there's a budget transfer, somebody could actually see and ask a question possibly as to why that transfer happened between a division. And, and I, I was kind of amazed that Harry brought up the issue about the LCTA not putting up their minutes. We have our own boards and authorities that don't do that, or boards and commissions. The retirement board doesn't put their minutes up, doesn't even put their agenda up. How surprising is that? Right here in our own county bill, building, they don't follow the rules. Surprising, isn't it? But we have a lot of them that don't. The election board, another one, don't, they don't put their minutes up, they don't put their agenda up like they're supposed to according to this council's laws. So maybe you could look into those things in the future. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
We need your name and where you reside, please.
My name's Jason Carr. I live in Sailorsburg, Pennsylvania.
Where?
Sailorsburg.
Sailorsburg.
Before the vote takes place regarding the key, the KOZ designation, I would just like to remind council and have them think about it before the vote. Luzerne County has approximately two hundred and eighty million dollars in debt, as well as a shortfall in their pension system that I believe is around fifty million dollars. I don't believe Mr. Miracle needs the tax break. I believe that he'll build on it. Whether the KOZ designation is given to him or not, he's a businessman, he'll profit from it. And if he won't profit from it, he won't build on it. I hope that the council represents the citizens, all the citizens of Luzerne County, and not just the special interests. Unfortunately, I had some questions, which unfortunately I wasn't able to ask Mr. Miracle because he left quickly, but I'm still here. And it's distressing that I own approximately thirty properties here in Luzerne County, and I had one county bill that got lost in the mail. And just out of principle, because I just wrote such big checks to the county, I asked for a reprieve on the interest and penalties of the, the one missing bill. Very small amount of money, I think a hundred and forty-eight dollars. And the answer that I got back from the department that I had contacted, I believe it was, the last name is Beers, I think, from what I remember, what I see is Beers. And her response was not to give me a, a break or not to help me out. It was to tell me that if I didn't pay the full bill with tax, with penalties and interest, the email said, it, it basically gave me instructions on how quickly I would lose my house. So, you know, in ending, I ask everyone to, on council, to think long and hard to give another tax break to a special interest of the county. And I just ask that you represent everyone in the county. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
If I could, Mr. Chair, jump in for one second to follow up on Mr. Griffith's comment. Walter, there, those budget transfers are on the budget and finance page.
Okay.
Twenty nineteen, they were posted as of August nineteenth, twenty nineteen, they're current.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate that.
Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Okay, Mr. Railroad, Mr. Urban, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Should I take it personally that this meeting went long? Does it make...
Is it saying former rally? Former rally after.